Okay, Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We are here for the innovation panel. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to my left by Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District Vice Chair of the Committee. Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District Member of the Committee. Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee. Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District. To my immediate rights, Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We have Rebecca Tab from the Office of the Council President. Representing Mayor Jack Young is Jeff Amoros.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have the following agencies: Finance, BSIT, Comptroller, specifically Municipal Telephone Exchange, Mayor's Office of Sustainable Solutions, and the Mayor's Office of Innovation. Who is not here? We got the comptroller, we got Mayor's. They are? Can everyone who's going to testify grab a seat up front? Who's here from BSIT? You're BSIT? Oh, Dan, you got Innovation and then Finance. That's going to be you, I guess. Okay, alright, great. I'm assuming Madam Comptroller is on behalf of Telephone Exchange. Yep, take it away, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I have here to present the Director of Department of Communications, Simon Edda.
Simon, would you like to come forward then?
Good afternoon.
Sir, please be sure to... Yep, there you go. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Our service provides communication equipment and service for all city services. The city's telephone system encompasses 26,000 stations, 16,000 phone lines, and 4,100 active voicemail boxes, serving approximately 800 addresses. Nine funded operator positions provide 14 hour coverage for persons wishing to contact city agencies. This service is funded by user charges through an internal service form. The recommended funding will maintain the current level of service. The fiscal 2020 recommended budget includes $618,000 in-depth service of financing the VoIP system over 10 years through May 2027. I do have Regent, our fiscal officer, and he has a few things to add.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Regent Lee, and I'm the fiscal officer for the Department of Communication Services in the Office of the Comptroller. Outside of what's been presented, which is basically in the slide presentation, for the record, I just wanted to mention a couple fiscal notes, notable things. One is the savings that we have achieved or projected to achieve. The projected achievement is $20 million for the next 10 years as we transition to the VoIP, the TIPP program. And that would be hopefully as of May 2000... I'm sorry, 10 years would be 2027, 2029. As of May 2019, we have actually achieved savings of $6 million as we've transitioned from the old Centrex system to the new VoIP system. The savings, part of the use of the savings will be an early retirement of the 10-year loan that we took from the city. And we're going from hopefully 10 years to three years. And with that, we're projecting about a $400,000 interest savings. And then finally, after that, our plan is to reduce the rates for the agencies after we've dealt with the debt. Our plan going forward is to reduce the rates for all agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's up next?
Chairman, committee, thank you for having us. I'm here to put... My name is Daniel Ramos, and I'm the Deputy Budget Director, here to present on the Innovation Fund. As you guys know, the Innovation Fund is a revolving loan fund for agencies that could demonstrate projects that have a return on investment, either in raising additional revenue or showing cost savings over time if there is one-time investment. Over the course of the history of the Innovation Fund, we've given out $6 million in loans. We have about $2 million available, and we have about $3.8 million that is currently out in funded projects that we are still awaiting with savings. The big change in the Innovation Fund funding or budget for this year is the movement, one part of the budget that funds the actual person, the Innovation Fund Manager, moved into our office, Service 708, the operating budget within Finance, and $180,000 went to the Mayor's Office to do the Edge Lean trainings and process improvement work. That was a priority of the previous administration.
We've been joined by Councilman Bill Henry, 4th District Member of the Committee; Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon. So, I'm here to talk about the Mayor's Office of Innovation, plans and budgets for the upcoming fiscal year. So, again, just a reminder about what this is, especially in comparison to the Innovation Fund. This is the office that was established in part through a grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies to set up a dedicated office. And the way we work is basically we do a deep dive into significant city challenges defined by the mayor as critical areas that could use some new thinking and some new focus. We've talked a fair amount about our initial work on police recruitment and hiring, obviously a major city challenge. There's a lot of, I think, positive strides on that front, even as we have a lot more work to do, and really excited for the forthcoming collaboration with Commissioner Harrison on that front. Just talking about the budget for the year ahead, the majority will still be covered through the Bloomberg Philanthropies Grant Fund. There is also a city match component. And just to flag one additional thing, it's the final bullet on this slide. There is a recommended additional amount for a new data fellows program, which would be basically an additional program starting this fiscal year. The idea is that agencies have opportunities with certain data they have access to, but maybe they don't have the capacity in-house to make full use of that data, to do the analysis needed to actually make it most useful to make new decisions, to create the taxpayer savings that can be generated from it. The idea is to hire a handful of fellows who would be embedded with the relevant city agency and to work with them with that data to help improve some issue, whether that be related to Transport or Department of Public Works, or it can be a different agency. The idea is we would want the agencies to actually sort of come in with a request and ask so that we would place those fellows in a situation where there's a chance for a real impact. Glad to say more about that program. That would be new and would start in the fiscal year. That's not something we've done in past years, but very excited about the potential for it.
I just want to speak to the budget. I know that Kenya is still relatively new in her role. Again, this is a split of the work that used to be all housed under Shante Eldridge. She left for another job. The funding was split between our office for the Innovation Fund work, and then the remainder of the balance moved into the Mayor's Alty. It's an activity within the Mayor's Office budget that houses all of the Edgework. And I'll let Kenya speak to the actual work.
Hello. So, the Lean Government, there are a couple of sides to it. So, on the one hand, we have, I'm not sure if you all remember, there was a Lean Training Program that a number of Baltimore City employees enrolled in. Well, at the end of that program, there was very little results. So, we got together, Baltimore City, under Shante Eldridge, and created the Edge Program. And created the Edge Program. The Edge Program provides city employees with business process improvement tools that they can use. Now, in year one, it's a entry-level kind of program where folks are learning just basic skills about just how to improve their processes. The plan for year two was to scale up and begin to move toward a Six Sigma model where folks could, as a team, departments could come in together and work on projects. We're not going to be able to do that because our budget was reduced a wee bit. So, we're going to move that to maybe year three. In the meantime, the other part of the work, our Lean Projects, that's the Smart City work, I'm not sure if you all are familiar, but Baltimore City was just named one of five cities in the country to be awarded. We are part of the Smart City Council Readiness Challenge. Yes, thank you for the applause, thank you. So, we are moving and shaking on Smart projects. So, as a result, just to give you an example of the projects, we have a project with DPW where we are attempting to get feedback from the on-the-ground employees who don't have access to email, so those that don't have regular staff meetings. But how do you know, how are you getting the feedback and the input from that level of employee? They're usually missed, they feel disconnected from the process. So, one of our Smart projects is to engage them. We are also working with DGS, changing the way that management is able to evaluate employees. We're working with a consultant to create a tool where managers can have an app on their phones, and as soon as there is an issue, good or bad, with an employee, they can immediately go in and make note of that. A third project, the one I was really excited about, is our partnership with T. Rowe Price. T. Rowe Price is working with us to hire a person who will start, I believe, on Monday. They're going to actually sit up in this building in MOCJ space because that was the only space that had a free desk, to be clear. But they're going to sit in that space, and their job, we're working with Baltimore Core, their job is going to be to evaluate a number of projects that were submitted by every city agency. I believe our top two projects, something involving the Police Department, I don't want to disclose yet what it is because we're still vetting all those projects. But every city agency provided a number of projects that would involve our coordinator to identify professionals in the field. And we're working with a number of partners, T. Rowe Price, Amazon, Cisco. So, as there is a need, for example, with Parks and Recs, if they need someone from Cisco to come in and do some work, we have that relationship. And the coordinator will help to make sure that connection is made. So, that's an example of our projects. Any questions so far?
We've also been joined by Council President Brandon Scott and Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District, Member of the Committee. And Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District. My apologies, Councilman, didn't see.
Madam Comptroller, I'll ask a couple of questions about MTE, Municipal Telephone Exchange. Can we talk about why Service 133 is still supporting two parallel phone systems? You know, we have the legacy system, and when do we expect to retire the legacy system?
The reason why there are two systems running is we're in the process of changing the old legacy Centrex system over to Voice Over IP. We are slated to complete that, and I can have Simon give you definitive answers. But the reason is because we are in the process of transferring over to Voice Over IP. We have saved $6 million since the process has started. And it is, what we're going to do is, we have a debt service that we have to pay for the new system, and we're in the process because we have moved quicker than we had anticipated with the changeover. We're going, it was a 10-year payback period to eliminate the debt, but at the rate we're going, it should be within the next three years. And it was projected that we would save the city approximately $20 million over a 10-year period. Specifically, Simon, did you want to speak to where we are with the numbers of what has been cut over?
The VoIP implementation is a phased implementation for three years. And the reason the city did that is because of our infrastructure. The city infrastructure was not 100% ready for VoIP. It's a much larger issue, which also has to do with the overall network that BSIT is involved with. So, this is a phased migration. We are rapidly moving towards completion. I would say that we have achieved more than we expected. We've completed 7,153 lines so far, and we should be completed by October this year. And that will bring us a count of almost 9,000 lines. So, we are within where we expected to be. Now, in terms of some of our achievements and successes, let me just mention that the VoIP system we own in the city is in a private cloud. It's in the city cloud, in the two data centers. There's full redundancy. And I know the committee might be a little bit concerned as to the issues that happened with the network being down. One of the things we're looking at within the VoIP network is to have a disaster recovery, to have some of what we have in the data centers in the cloud, especially with our phone system. And that's what Madam Comptroller is also working towards the future. As I mentioned, the system is fully redundant. We have enhanced features that the old system never had. Caller ID, web, audio conference, video conference capabilities. It's a city-owned asset, we have more control. Today, if the agencies need to move the phones, it takes a couple of minutes. It used to take us about a week, sometime two weeks, with Verizon. So, the legacy system has been retired. It was very costly for the city. We've saved a lot of money, there's tremendous savings. And I think we all have to give ourselves some kudos for what's been accomplished so far.
Thank you. A follow-up, Mr. Chair. Do you have an estimate of what the savings is from retiring the legacy system? And also, if you do, can you provide that to us in a way that says how much the city will save, let's say by fiscal year annually, how much we'll save by moving to strictly over and retiring the legacy system?
Actually, Mr. President, we'll be glad to provide you that information. Some of that information is already on the comptroller's website as we speak. If anyone had a chance to go into the comptroller's website, we have the current savings and our projected savings, and we'll be glad to provide you that information. And Regent, can you provide the President some of the numbers that we currently have?
I think it's already been mentioned a couple of times that the projection for the 10-year savings as we transition to the VoIP is $20 million. We have realized, as of May fiscal '19, we have realized $6 million of that $20 million.
And do you have that, like a breakdown of, again?
Yes. I prepared, there is a, what the Director Edda referred to is there are financial reports and an executive summary of the whole TIP program on the comptroller's website. I've prepared a couple of these.
This is where you would find them.
And so, it's circled in red where the reports are located. And on top, you see the IP, you see the hyperlink where you can go to.
Thank you, because if we can find that by, have that by fiscal year, I think that would be great. And that, Mr. Chair, to have that breakdown would be a great thing, to request to have the savings for VOIP be given to us by fiscal year.
And those reports will be updated as we continue on the program.
I know that they will, I have no doubt that they will.
So, Mr. President, do we want the, do we just want to copy the report?
Well, yeah, we can download the report, but I think that moving forward, we should also have it. I'm saying, I don't know if BBMR wants to comment on that to see how you guys think we should go about doing that or continuing to have that done.
Yeah, bringing it down by fiscal year, we will work with the comptroller's office to get that information and present it as part of our council follow-ups.
Okay. So, Jeff, what is that, number 11, 12?
Number 11.
Okay. So, that's comptroller's office.
Noted.
And that is a breakdown by fiscal year of the savings for VoIP.
Thank you, thank you. My next questions are for you, sir. What can you share with us about your office's plan or your former office's plan to train community members as recruiters for new police department applicants?
Thank you, Council President. So, I'm still overseeing the Innovation Office as well, so the...
Two jobs, one paycheck?
Exactly.
That's how it works around here.
So, yeah, so I mean, so the plan is to launch that in the summer. We've wanted to wait until the marketing campaign for police recruitment launches, which will launch at the end of this month. That is going to be, I think, a really powerful and very visible thing that the residents of Baltimore will see, and I think will immediately be a really exciting way to sort of interest people in joining the department. Beyond that, I think there's this more targeted exercise that you're talking about, which we're now calling the Community Referral Campaign, that we think should launch on the back of that, basically, when people have sort of seen the big call to action that the wider campaign will bring first. So, there is still, we are still going to launch it this summer, but after the main campaign launches.
Okay. And in that campaign, are we still having the goals of trying to hire 25 officers a month, 33% of them being from Baltimore, and 50% of them being black and 33% being women versus what we have today? Are those still the targets?
Those are still the targets.
Thank you. My next question, my last question for this round, Mr. Chair, is, this is a question actually that I asked last year at the budget hearings and wanted to see, I know they're no longer here. If your office has had any success, and of course, I stand really willing and able to help make that happen tomorrow if need be, what is the status of your office's linking the police cadet program with our vocational high schools? And have we had any movement on that effort?
So, there's been, thank you, Council President. There's been, I think there's been a lot of movement generally in terms of the cadet program and in terms of recruitment from high schools, including those high schools that have specialized, relevant programming, you know, to law enforcement. We have not specifically created something tied to like a vocational training school, but again, I think that can fit into these increased outreach efforts that are happening. So, I think that's something we can work on.
So, Mr. Chair, this isn't really a request, so I just want to make that be clear so you don't have to add it to the list. But what I will say to you, Mr. Director, is that you, myself, my office, and we'll get with the Police Department and the folks that oversee the CTE portion of city schools to make this a reality. Because for me, like I said, last year wasn't new at that time. But the importance is if we have, and you know, I'm always going to say Mervo because I believe blue and gold, if we have a public safety track at Mervo, at Carver, at Dunbar, at whatever schools that we have, and we know that we have hundreds of young people entering them, I think it would behoove us to figure out a way to embed the cadet programs into those schools. For example, just this past week, along with Mayor Young, I attended the Fire Department's graduation. It's actually one of my proudest days of an elected official because a young lady that I've mentored since she was in 6th grade and graduated from Vivian T. Thomas High School just last year, graduated from the Fire Academy because she was in a program that in-school with the Fire Department, working in Vivian T. Thomas to help prepare her to be an EMT. We can do the same thing with our police cadet program that they are doing and expand upon that. And I think when we're thinking about trying to finally have a homegrown Police Department, young people across the city are telling us by selecting these, self-selecting these trades tracks at these schools that we are interested in being public safety servants, but we are not providing the opportunity. And also, with the council's push and now Commissioner Harrison's push to civilianize the Police Department and take officers off of desk-duty jobs and put them back on the street, my guess is that some of them are going to choose to not go back on the street and retire. But we also can talk about duly training some of those, especially the older ones, as teachers and putting them in the schools to actually lead a program similar to JROTC that will send people straight to being a cadet in the Police Department. So, look forward to working with us to try to make that a reality over the summer.
Great.
I have a question for, I guess this is for the comptroller. In the fiscal year 2019 hearings, our understanding was that the Police Department was spending $68,000 a month on 1,100 landlines. Do we know the status of their transition to VOIP?
Yeah, and Simon, maybe you can... We had, we had issues with, Simon, when it come up. We had, originally, we had problems with the Police Department because they were not ready for us to implement Voice Over IP. But it is my understanding now, and Simon, can you give them an update on the lines that we've cut over?
Yeah, initially, we had issues with the Police Department, again, due to infrastructure. The Police Department had, their network wasn't part of the city domain, and BSIT worked tirelessly to bring them in as part of the city. We've so far implemented Police Headquarters. It's all done, the entire building is completed. We still have a few precincts that we'll be working on. As soon as things settle down with the current crisis, we'll embark on that and complete the precincts. But the Police Headquarters has been up for the last few months.
What percentage would you say that that's complete?
I would say police had approximately...
2,000 lines? 1,100.
I'd say police should be about 90%.
90%?
Yes, sir.
And what are we looking at for cost savings? $68,000 a month for 1,100 landlines, what does that cost for VoIP?
In terms of the cost savings of the police, I think we have to look at those numbers and provide you something more concrete.
So, Jeff, let's make that number 12. Cost savings associated with Police Department's transition of VoIP. Thank you. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is for BBMR. We heard this evening that there's anticipated $20 million savings overall as we switch over the Voice Over Internet, and then even $6 million savings since May of 2019. Did you all anticipate this level of savings? And if so, are these savings being realized in other activities?
So, MTE is what is a global adjustment that we work with the comptroller's office at the CLS time, so in the early fall, and incorporate it into that current level of service forecast that we brief you guys on at some time in early, late fall. So, that has been part of the reason that we've, as we've seen the last couple of years that we've had, we've gone into the planning process with surpluses. Part of that is that MTE is a major expense, and those costs have been flat or a little bit down year over year. But we haven't seen, we see that allocated out into the agencies. We get the projections from the comptrollers, which is allocate based on the number of phones.
So, I'm clear, you said it's too early to start planning the savings related to the overhaul of the telephone system?
Yeah.
What I'd like to say is that the current charges are the same because what we're trying to do is to pay down the debt. Because if we pay it down prior to the 10-year... Because if we pay it down prior to the tenure projection, we will save $400,000 in interest. And as was stated earlier, it was a 10-year, um, payback period. And it is projected that we will have the entire debt paid off within three years. And then the agencies will recognize some reduction in charges.
Oh, okay, so are, are we saying that we're three years out from completely-
Total repayment.
Okay, and then at that point, you, or leading up to that point, you'll be able to start planning what that se- how that, what that savings looks like?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this question is for, in, the Innovation Fund more than the Office of In- of Innovation. Um, it is, it's just sort of a check. Um, we've had previous conversations with DPW about trying to increase the recycling percentage. If DPW wanted to do a pilot program in a couple neighborhoods around the city where they gave away recycling bins the same way that we now have city-owned trash bins, um, at every property, uh, to see if they could increase the percentage of recycling collection in those neighborhoods. And that would save the city money in terms of increased recycling means decreased trash. Uh, would that be a legitimate use of the Innovation Fund to fund the purchase of those bins for distribution?
If they can demonstrate budgeted savings, uh, part of the innovation, part of the reason that we're bringing on a full-time resource is to actually go out and help agencies develop that return on investment. In that particular instance, we'd have to do our due diligence because the cost of recycling has significantly increased over what had been previously budgeted. So we would have to look at that one a little bit closer. But it would be an eligible expense if there was a cost difference between, you know, processing trash or picking up recycling.
So what would happen if, when that projection was run and it turned out that it did not entirely pay for itself, but it's already in the city's sustainability plan that a goal is to increase the recycling, uh, percentage, collection percentage? So that's something we want to do, even if it's not cost neutral.
So we also have some flexibility about the repayment schedule, so if there is budgeted savings, we can extend the, the, the terms of the loan.
Loan period?
Yes. Um, but if there is, if they cannot demonstrate their return on investment, but it's still a good program, we divert them over to our enhancement process, um, which, um, agencies have all been allowed, have, as part of the budget process, submit their enhancement process. It's reviewed by an independent team that makes a recommendation to the Budget Office and we make recommendations to the mayor.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Schleifer.
All right, so I got questions for, uh, two different agencies, but I guess I'll start with this, uh, voiceover IP stuff. Um, I'm not so clear on a lot of the history, so when, when did you guys start, uh, transferring all the phones over?
We, uh, we began the transition in 2016, sometime around November 2016.
And, um, so how many phones in total, um, do you need to transfer, like in the city?
Um, when it's all settled down, it'll be about 9,000 plus.
9,000, okay. And how many have you guys done already?
Uh, we've so far implemented about 7,100.
7,100, okay. And you said the rest of them are going to be done by when?
Uh, we- We're hoping to finalize our implementation by November this year, if, uh, goes well, um, or sooner. But that's our hope.
Gotcha. So can you explain a little bit more, because it happened really quickly, about the, the $6 million savings? That's on the 7,100? Is that what, is that what you guys are saying?
Right, yeah, it's a reduction on the billing. And, uh, part of that savings as well, let me just say this, um, part of the savings is, um, as we are transitioning to the newer system, we're also doing audits, ongoing audits. And we're finding, uh, facilities that were underutilized. So we're getting rid of those and we're generating savings from that. If we hadn't done that, they'll probably be there and the city will be paying for it. So we, we're doing, we have ongoing audits, uh, as we eliminate the legacy stuff or get rid of it and bring in the new stuff, we, we're realizing savings in those areas.
And how that's working is, um, if we see there's an underutilization of, um, a li- line usage, what we will do, we won't totally disconnect it because to, the agency may need it, so we will just cut it off for a certain time period. And if the agency tells us that they actually need that line, then it will be reconnected per se, but not totally disconnected because there's a reconnection charge from Horizon if we totally disconnect it and the agency says that they, that they really do need it.
So, just as a point of hopefully clarification, um, we use the base, base charges of fiscal, July, uh, June fiscal 16. Uh, that would be prior to, I'm sorry, June fiscal 17. That would be prior to the move over into VoIP that occurred in November 17. So using that as the base, we've tracked monthly, it's called the Centrex Charge, the, the legacy system. We've tracked monthly how much reduction has occurred. And if you were to total the reduction from the base of July, I'm sorry, I'm getting all the fiscal year, I'm not used to fiscal year. I'm fairly new to city. Uh, if you were to track all the monthly savings, it would, as of May 2019, total $6 million. And projecting forward for the rest of, uh, the time of savings and the implement, full implementation, uh, we're looking at about a $20 million savings.
Okay, so how do, okay, I guess where, where I'm a little confused, I need some clarity on, is how we went from $6 million savings in I guess a year or two to, um, to $20 million savings over 10 years?
Over the rest of the years, as we transition away totally from the legacy system.
Gotcha, so this savings is cumulative, it's not an annual savings, you're saying?
Oh, no, yes, it's, it's accumulative. I'm sorry, yeah, that's, that's a big difference.
Yes, it is definitely a big difference. So I guess for just some history, because, you know, most of us are new on the council, why did it take till the year 2016 to, I mean, it's news to me as being, just being new in government. Um, obviously I appreciate the new phone line, but when you talk about things like, um, I think you were mentioning about caller ID and that, those kind of functions, um, I mean, those were around since I was a kid, uh, before I knew how to use a phone. So I'm just, I'm just curious about, you know, all right, so, yeah, exactly. So I'm just curious to know why, like, what took so long to get to this point where, because when we talk about like a $20 million savings over 10 years, and I see that we're like 20 years behind on this. To me, it's like, yeah, I'm, I'm excited about saving $20 million over 10 years, but then like it's, it's painful to think about how much money we could have saved over all those years.
Just briefly, and then maybe he can expound on it, um, this process started 11, maybe years ago. And, um, we had, we hired consultants who, uh, engaged with, um, the comptroller and the MTE to tell us how we could move forward and how we could save money, however it got forestalled in the administration. And it took 10 years for the approval process to start implementing voiceover IP.
And, uh, well, part of the reason it took so long also, uh, has to do with, uh, the city's infrastructure. Um, the city had, voiceover IP has run on your data network. That data network has to be ready. If you don't have it ready, then you're going to have a lot of issues. Uh, the city had not, uh, invested on its infrastructure as a sureup. We didn't have updated switches to run VoIP, uh, cabling. We still have issues with cabling in the courthouses. That's why the courthouses haven't been done. We have to upgrade that, so a lot had to do with the infrastructure. Uh, the comptroller's office, like the comptroller mentioned, started this almost 10, 11 years ago. And we've done a lot of work. Some of it, some of the delay was, uh, policy differences within the city. Uh, I'm sure, Councilman, you may, you'll probably find out from your peers what some of those differences were. But some of it was within the city itself.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Um, and this is for BCIT. Hello? Um, I, I wasn't so clear on, on exactly what your role was in BCIT, so can you just repeat that? Or give us a little bit of overview?
So my title is Smart City Strategist.
Okay.
That's the title. Prior to, this is a brand-new position. Prior to, um, me starting on May the 20th, Shontae Eldridge, who was Deputy Chief of Operations, she started the conversation in Baltimore around smart cities. She transitioned, they created a position, and here I am. So in terms of the role, there are a couple of things that are happening. One is there is, there was this training program for city employees called LEAMS, three levels. You had to work on a project, but when we look back at the data, so few, um, A, so few city employees finished, and those who finished did not actually do anything with the training program. So, um, in, in order to revamp the LEAN program, we met with a number, we had a, a few, um, conversations with folks who were in the program, how did it work, what happened? And they said, listen, what we really want is something that's easy, we can go right back to our offices and apply almost immediately. So we worked as a team, and when I say as a team, the training is implemented by Baltimore city employees. So Shontae identified, there were nine of us who sat in a two-day Train the Trainer, figured out what we wanted to, um, offer city employees and came up with a training program. So there are three sessions over, three, over nine, um, tools that we teach city employees. We have started the program in January with our first info session. We had a waitlist for the, we always have a waitlist, actually. For our first, we finished two cohorts. Our first cohort, we enrolled 35 and finished with 32. And our second cohort, which just finished, we enrolled 36 and finished with 34.
What's the goal?
A cohort?
No, what's the goal of the, of, of, of the training? I mean, what's the end result?
The name of the program is Edge, and the goal is to provide Baltimore city employees with these business process improvement tools so that as they're having ideas, as they want to improve their business processes within their own agencies, now they can do that in-house.
Has anybody, um, in that program, I know you said you're new, but I'm saying from within the program, has anybody like come to any council people to, you know, get input, being that we're the conduit between the citizens and the agencies?
That's before my time, I don't know.
Gotcha. Were you in, uh, BCIT before you started or you came from the outside?
No, I was with the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice for two years.
Gotcha.
And then DPW a year before that.
Gotcha, okay, so who, so are you right on, you're right under the director?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I actually report to the Chief of Staff.
Gotcha. So have you even gotten an email set up yet since you're so new?
I just got my emails turned back on about two hours ago.
Two hours ago, okay. How often do you speak to, uh, to the director?
Uh, almost every day, in passing at least.
Gotcha, so he's, so he provides the guidance for this program?
No, prior to, um, me being hired by BCIT, Edge, Smart Cities, all of that was housed in the Mayor's Office with Shontae. So again, when she transitioned in April and they created this new position, it's, I sit in the ma- I sit in BCIT, but my budget, as he mentioned, is still part of the Mayor's Office budget.
Gotcha, okay. So first off, welcome.
Well, thank you.
And secondly, just my two cents that maybe to go back to, uh, BCIT as well as to the, to the Mayor's Office with, is that when there's programs like this, or when you guys are working on anything new, innovative, and you want to build a consensus around, you want to get people engaged and part of it so that it actually works, I strongly recommend you come to the legislative body, um, who actually is where the rubber meets the road and could probably provide the most input, um, on these programs as well as what specific agencies could probably use, um, the training and these exercises. Um, and so that's also something that I think has been, um, a breakdown in communication, uh, being that, uh, BCIT, overall, their strategic plan has not been something that they've come around and briefed us on. And so the fact that there's individual programs going on that I'm sure comes under the umbrella is, is something that needs to come before the council.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that because we've got a couple of really cool, smart city projects. Because we won that challenge, we are now part of a year-long process to prioritize some smart city projects. And guess who's missing from the table? You all. So when I call you in two weeks and say, "We are having our smart city launch across the street at Ablewoman", I do hope that all of you are able to come.
So, Councilman, I got to jump in here.
Well, can I, okay.
So, we would love to come to that. We don't know about that because we get zero communication from your boss, and that's something that needs to change. And we will certainly address that with him directly on Friday afternoon when he comes before the council. And this is not directed at you because you seem like you're on the ball and you're new and, and we don't want it directed toward you personally. But we get zero communication from the CIO of this city, and that is completely unacceptable, and that needs to change. Councilman?
I, I just want to make sure that we're clear, up until May the 20th, none of this work was under BCIT. It was all under the Mayor's Office, so-
Gotcha, I'm just saying in general, we, it's a standard practice that we get zero communication from BCIT. And I'm just saying in general, that needs to change.
Well, as far as smart cities and, and the Edge program is concerned, we are all about to be best friends.
Okay, and that's, and that's great and welcome that, and, um, and the chairman took, uh, some of what I was going to say out of my mouth. And so, um, you know, great minds think alike, but I can just tell you, when, if I would receive an email invitation from you for that program, and I'd never heard of that program, I would assume that that link might be another attack, uh, another hack that's coming in. And I probably wouldn't, I probably wouldn't open the email, so-
I got you.
So again, like the chairman said, we need to know about these programs, we need briefings on the programs, and we need the information sent to us so that, and, and those who want to inquire about more can get that information. And so I've requested a new short of a dozen times a briefing on the strategic plan of, of the city's IT plan. And so I would also welcome you to come in and give a briefing on, on what you're working on.
Will do.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Clark?
Oh, don't go away. I, I think all my questions have been answered, almost. Because my, it was about what, it, we are, what are we talking about?
Okay.
So, what is your name?
Kenya, like the country.
Is that your first or last?
That's my first.
And what's your last?
Last name is Asli, A-S-L-I.
And so you're like kenya dot Asli at BaltimoreCity.gov?
Well, you know, they had to add the, my middle initial, so now it's Kenya N dot Asli.
There are two Kenya-
No, I think they all get routed to me eventually, but when I left DPW, they added the N when I started at the Mayor's Office, so-
Okay, so you're Kenya dot N dot-
Kenya N or Kenyon, K-E-N-Y-A-N.
Okay.
Dot Asli at BaltimoreCity.gov.
Okay, I, I just asked you because you're from BCIT and I just wondered whether you had a city email address yet.
I just, I just got it.
Um, all right, was, there was some kind of- There was some kind of discussion about where the funding came from. Forget about where it's, what it is, what agency it is.
Okay.
But what was that discussion about? Was there money from, that was going to innovations? And part of it then got split, and then went to this program? What was that?
So all of this work used to be housed under BBMR. Under the Pew administration, the decision was made to move it into the mayorality, so they took a full-time position from BBMR, as well as the work, the budget for consultants and the training costs. And that moved into, under the Innovation Fund, but functionally in the mayorality. This year, the decision was made that it would be better served that the Budget Office were to manage the Innovation Fund portion, and the Mayor's Office would manage the lean, edge, process improvement work. So.
So it's all coming from Blumen?
No. So that, there's the Innovation Fund, which is, we used to make appropriations into the fund. Over the course of many years, there's been a balance that has grown, where the money that is getting repaid by agencies is covering the loans that are going out to new projects.
So it's circulating money?
Yes, from, that's from the Innovation Fund. The Innovation Team, and I'm sorry for the confusion, the Innovation Team is funded primarily through the Bloomberg Philanthropies grant.
Oh.
So there are two separate offices, services, functions.
Which one is which?
So the Innovation Fund, if you have your agency detail too, is on page 111.
No, I don't have a budget book with me.
Okay.
You can just talk to me.
So the Innovation Team is.
There's an innovation program, that's on the sixth floor.
Yes.
They're trying to help people recruit police officers.
Yes.
Right now. And I hope, working on mid-neighborhoods.
Yes.
Yes. That's them.
Yes.
Which one are they?
They're an activity within the mayorality, so Service 125.
Are they called, I'm sorry, are they called the Innovation Fund, or the Innovation?
The Office of Innovation.
Okay.
Mayor's Office of Innovation, I'm sorry.
And their money comes from revolving loans and?
No, they, they're funding, so Dan Heimowitz is the Director for the Mayor's Office of Innovation. Their funding comes primarily from Bloomberg Philanthropies, a grant, yes. Separate and apart from that, we also, the city on a whole, has an Innovation Fund that is managed by the Budget Office. That is a rotating loan fund.
Oh, so that doesn't get dedicated back to, all right. So, all right, so they're there. Is there any connection whatsoever with this?
No, these are three separate and apart programs.
They just happen to have the same name?
Yes.
They're not related at all?
No.
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. Somehow I heard about funds moving, and I thought.
So, so.
I thought one thing was being diminished in favor of another, but I was wrong.
No, it was all housed under the Innovation Fund service. The work that Kenya is doing, and the management of the Innovation Fund, that was split. So the smart cities work and the process improvement is now budgeted. It's its own activity within the Mayor's Office budget. And then part of the funding went to BBMR to replace the person that we had lost that used to manage the Innovation Fund.
Okay. And they're training people to, train other people to, when they have ideas, be able to present them effectively?
Is that your person, or is that, so?
I'm talking about, yeah, yours.
So my budget until recently was 274,000. And what it allowed us to do was a number of pilot programs. It allowed us to run the lean program, and it also budgeted for a person in year two to grow the lean program. That budget was reduced and sent back to BBMR to fund a person to do something similar.
Okay, I, never mind. Someday, I'll understand, but it probably won't be today.
I understand.
Don't want to ruin your day.
Oh, I'm having a great day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Stokes?
I just have a suggestion for recycling. I know Councilman Bill Henry talked about recycling, and as a sponsor, I think we need to increase our recycling. My question is, we gave out green trash cans, and people got bad habits. This city is filthy. And we did not, even if we used the cans, there should have been something in the top saying, this is your trash day. You give people a can, and their habit's still bad. So if you're going to be using the trash, the recycling bins, and work through DPW, I think we need to do that with the top. So when you give people cans, it should have the day that they have to recycle. Because you don't, you mail out them little brochures, you get in the mail, and they say that's your recycling, people put that in the trash. So if we're going to give people cans, and we know our city is filthy, and we need to clean it up, my suggestion is we need to have something in the top saying, this is your recycling day to recycle your belongings. Because if we're not doing it, we're just giving out cans. That's why you see recycling cans got trash in them. Because people don't know, and we're not sharing that with them. Just a suggestion.
We'll make that suggestion at the DPW.
Council Vice President Middleton?
Just a, I guess, a clarification and an idea with the Mayor's Office of Innovation, so I can kind of just understand what you're looking for. A few, maybe two or three years ago, Liberty Rec Tech partnered with the Baltimore City Training Center with cadets and Liberty Elementary School. And they had a whole day where, I guess it was about 75 of the cadets came there in the morning. You know, they met with community people and just talked, they all introduced themselves, were from different cultures, different backgrounds, and it was just kind of that dialogue with each other. Then the cadets were taken into the classrooms with the students, and the student, the bonding, and just the young people learning that police start as cadets, and just, that whole thing was just a wonderful connection. And it just happened like one day. And I think the area, they want to continue something like that, because it was really powerful. Are you like accepting proposals like that to, for that connection? Because it involves community, it involves the Police Department working, you know, with the school system. It's just so many connections. How can we get something like that really happening at least, you know, as the cadets, you know, whatever process they're in? Because they even enjoyed it.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Yeah, no, it sounds like an amazing program. The, you know, because we've been focused on like recruitment and hiring of new officers, the cadet program we've been working with is the cadet program that's for 18 to 20 and 1/2-year-olds. I think you might be referring to the trainees who are in the police academy?
Yes.
And, you know, so we haven't specifically worked with the academy itself in terms of their programming, but I just completely agree that there's so many opportunities like that to better, you know, introduce our new officers, who, you know, often do come from different places, you know, outside of Baltimore.
Earlier this morning, I had kind of mentioned that, you know, we really have to start stepping out of the box and really thinking of things, because some, a lot of things are just not working. And it's, you know, we have this kind of office. Someone needs to take the initiative to just try to, you know, again, start. Like this one-day thing was just so good. It's something, we got to start exposing our young people to, you know, at an early age, to police. And then also, the cadets came from different areas of the county, different countries. I mean, it was a bonding all the way around. I mean, the whole day was really powerful.
Yeah, no, it sounds, it sounds great. I'd love to meet, to talk more about it, and see what we might be able to do together.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Director, what departments do you think are leaders in incorporating data-driven service delivery? If any?
So you're asking, you're in Baltimore City?
Yes, in Baltimore City. City government.
Again, I'm, so I, it's sort of, I think you're, you know, asking me with my city hat, city stat hat, perhaps. And again, I'm sort of new to that role. I mean, in my opinion, I think, for example, I think the Department of Health is one such example.
And can you talk about, can you speak to examples of, like maybe in health department, they've made innovative changes to their business practices as a result of their participating in what's known as the mini-stat process?
So, yeah, and I wasn't specifically referring to it connected to a stat, a stat process. So I don't, I don't, yeah, and again, being new to this role, I don't, I don't have a specific, you know, experience working with them on this. It's just, that's, you know, again, I'm sort of in the process of understanding which programs and which departments we can work with to try and improve their performance together through better accountability. But I, yeah, I don't, and I don't believe there has, at least in the last, the most recent iteration of city stat, been a specific Department of Health stat meeting. So I was referring more to their internal.
Overall.
Of data.
Well, can we, we know that you're new. Can we, within, let's say, the first six months of you being in the job, have a further discussion about agencies that are incorporating data-driven service delivery? I think that would be important.
I would love to.
Conversations for us to have as you get settled. And to that, also, to further that, to your knowledge, do you know are there any agencies or departments across the city that have set up their own internal data analytics to analyze their own data?
So, I mean, to varying, Council President, yeah, to varying extents, I mean, I think, it depends the extent to which, you know, you're talking about, you know, a proper analytics, you know, department. Obviously, the Police Department has a comstat process that they undertake. You know, I think in general, I think a lot of agencies, you know, would jump at the chance for more data analytic capacity in their shops to make, you know, better use of the data that they have. So, you know, I don't have the example of who's the leader on that front today.
So the same thing, we should further this discussion over the next, you know, five to six months as you get settled in. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, anyone else? Okay, we're in recess. We have dinner at 6:30, and then we have city schools at 7:00.